All right, welcome everyone to our annual budget hearing. And at this point, I will turn it over to the person who will be telling us all that we need to know about our budget, Mr. Lundberg.
Thank you Renee. As we went through the preliminary budget back in May, there's not a lot of substance change to the budget, a lot of minor changes. As I told somebody if I had a dollar for every change from the principal I had, I wouldn't be here today. I'd be retired. But it's just how the process goes and we make very minor changes and stuff. In the end, the general fund added to its deficit from 223,000 to 245,000. So it was an additional 20,000 of expenditures that we added to the total budget versus the revenue, rather minor in the whole scheme of things. But as I said back in May too, I'll just reiterate what I said back then, the budget is really much more of a, is much more than just a fiscal planning and accountability tool. It's a document that shows where you've been, where you're at right now, and where you're going. It outlines the district priorities, goals, and pathways for moving forward, and it maps it, it's a mapping tool to achieve your visions. So remember that. As a school board member, basically you're empowered to do three things. Make policy, hire and evaluate a superintendent, and approve a budget that operate, to operate the school with fiscal responsibility. And tonight, that is one of the things that you are doing. You're approving a budget that is a good steward of the taxpayers' dollars. So with that said, I'll go into the handout that I had for you guys. Like I said, not a lot of change on the first page of the budget there are the expenditures. The general fund is showing $23,343,000 expenditures, Capilale 4,730,000, Special Ed Fund 5,937,000, Pension Fund 293,000, the Bond Redemption Fund 2,880,000, and the Food Service Fund The next page incorporates the revenues into those scenarios, which is four or five lines up from the bottom, you'll see total revenue of 27,98,000 in the general fund and all the way across. The current balances or deficits for each year, the general fund has a $245,000 deficit. Special Ed Fund is in the positive of 340,000. If you remember back when we talked about it in May, that we needed to do that, that fund is seriously in jeopardy of not being able to cash flow. It can't cash flow itself, and we need to rebuild that fund balance in there. Pension Fund is the last year of the pension fund, so it has a deficit of 290,000. The remaining 50,000 in that fund will be transferred into the general fund where the pension liabilities will be assumed into the general fund after this year. Now, I did circle the bottom two lines there, the fund balances at the end of the year and what they would be projected at the end of next year. The general fund is, at the end of this year, is about 5.3 million, which is pretty much even keel to where it is last year. So it's pretty much break even. The Capilale Fund is projected at 1.6 million. Special Ed Fund will have 220,000. Pension Fund will have 343,000. Bond Redemption Fund will have just under 800,000, and the Food Service Fund 750,000. And then it shows what we're projected to have at the end of June 30th, 2019. These fund balances are very key, as I've talked to you many times in the past about them. And I am very, very proud of how you as a board and we as an administration have managed these fund balances. It's very key to the operation of a school district, the fund balance. It helps you, you need to have some because it helps you cash flow the whole district, but you don't need to have too much because it's not your money, it's the taxpayers' money. A small, small portion of each of that is your money because you're paying taxes. We're fiscally, it just shows we're fiscally responsible with the taxpayers' dollars. And I think it's been a tremendous job of managing those fund balances throughout the years. Now, I do include in this presentation the charts in the budget, the revenue, shows the revenue a total of 44,128,000. And that includes all of the funds. All the funds combined has a total revenue of $44 million that you'll be approving tonight. Of that total 44 million, you can see on the chart, just under 50% of that is derived from local sources and 44% from state sources. So local and state account for 94% of the total budget. We talk a lot about those other things, but it doesn't have a real big impact on the whole budget when you look at it that way. The next page is the expenditures, 44.3 million. And it's divided up between the funds. The general fund comprises 62% of the total expenditures in the district. And you can see there, Capilale 12%, Spec Ed 13%, Bond Redemption 6%, and Food Service 5.5%. The next slide shows the salaries. This is a slide I always want to point out to each of the board members. The salaries for next year, just under 75% of each salary and benefit dollar can be directly pinpointed into the classroom. I think that's very key to you as a board member, that when you look at the whole picture of the school district and the operation of the whole district, 75% of each salary dollar can be directly pinpointed to the classroom. And you can see the breakdown of where the other dollars are going there. Ask any questions if you see them as we go through here. The next slide deals with just the general fund only, $27 million in revenue in 2018, 19. 93% of that revenue is coming from local taxes and state aid. As you can see by the chart below it, 93% from local taxes and state aid. Once again, we talk a lot about the other stuff, but it doesn't really have a huge impact when you look at the whole scope of things. The next slide is the general fund expenditures. 62% is in instruction, 35% support services, and 3% in co-curricular. Now, I just said that 75% of the dollar goes into the classroom. There's a lot of classroom activities included in support services. Libraries, guidance counselors, that type of stuff. So it's, support services lends itself, just terminology wise, to be administration. It's not. It's a lot of classroom type stuff too. The general fund expenditures by object level, 85% is salary and benefits in the general fund. 85 cents of every dollar is salary and benefits. 5% is used for utilities, 5% for supplies, and 4% for supplies, or purchase services, other purchase services. We're very staff-driven. I mean, this is an industry that's just extraordinarily driven by the people. There's not, that's why I always say if we got into trouble and you need to do something, I mean, we can't sit around here and talk about cutting pens and pencils, it doesn't amount to anything. 85% of the total budget is staff. Always keep that in mind. Next slide is the Capilale Budget. 5,405,000. All money that's raised in that fund is from local sources, local taxes basically. There's a little bit of donation money in there, but very little. So it's a fund that's driven completely by the local tax dollar. The expenditures next year, facility improvements, 2.2 million. A good portion of that is the high school remodel, office remodel, or classroom, former office into classrooms, three classrooms for a half a million roughly, and 1.1 million for the turf. So 1.5 is the turf and the high school remodel of that 2.2 million of facility improvements, great majority of it. As I talked about earlier, the debt service in the Capilale Fund is only 10% of our total budget. Key, very key in the fact that most districts our size are anywhere from a third to a half, 33% to 50% of their budget is debt. It goes back to what we talked about in the preliminary budget, that we're not buying stuff until we can afford to pay for it. I think it's a very good attitude to have when you're dealing with the budget. The next slide is the Special Education Fund. Revenues of 6.3 million, just under 6.3 million, expenses of 5.9. This allows us to have a little bit of surplus going into next year, hopefully. You can never predict the fund going down the road, but hopefully we'll realize that $300,000 of surplus and start to build up our fund balance in that fund. Local revenue, the revenues, local sources are 46%, state sources are 42%, and federal Federal law shoots for trying to get the federal sources to 40%, which is one heck of a long ways from 12. And I've been doing this for 29 years, and I've never seen it getting more, close to 40%. But we can talk about, gives me something to talk about every year. The next slide is the district valuations. And you can see down from '17, '18 to '18, '19. Went from 1.8 million to basically, or billion, to basically 2 billion. A $200 million increase in our valuation, 11%. And I'm not one on emojis, but if Mr. Schrader looked over here, he'd see a smiley face emoji that I have on my notes here. That is one heck of an increase, folks. That is a great benefit to the district. We're growing in valuation, we're growing in kids, much better position to be in. $200 million valuation increase. The next slide is the mill levies that are projected to be for 2019, basically remaining unchanged in total, totality. You can see the Special Education Fund went up about 10%, but the Bond Redemption Fund at Brandon Valley in turn went down about 10 cents. So our levies will, for all practical purposes, remain the same in 2019 as they are in 2018. Just a shift between Spec Ed and Bond Redemption. The Special Education Fund levy, the general fund levies are all set by the state legislature. The Capilale Fund is set by the local school board, and you guys set that at the maximum level each year, have for 20 years. The Bond Redemption Fund is set by the amount of debt that you have in there, that you have to pay back every year. You have to levy enough to make the payments on your debt. The last slide has some of the key highlights of the budget. You can see on the top half of that, the expenditures as they relate to last year, this year versus last year. The general fund is basically up 1.1 million, 4.5%. Capilale Fund is down in expenditures. We deficit spent the Capilale Fund last year. So our revenues, our expenditures are down 7%, but our revenues are up 5% in the Capilale Fund. Special Education Fund, our revenues are up 9.5%. Our expenditures are up only 3.3%, which allows us to have that $300,000 surplus. If you would allow me to just go through the highlights there in the middle of the page. The general fund, June 30th, 2018, the fund balance, as I stated earlier, will remain stable at about 5.3 million dollars. We did have a budgeted deficit, as I've talked to you guys a lot about, that we budgeted that deficit of 250,000, I guess last year's 268,000, but we have not hit it. It's being responsible with the taxpayer dollars, in my opinion. And we're budgeting that deficit for a reason, so we don't accumulate more fund balance than we need. We maintain the fund balance at 5.3 million, which is right in that 20% range. How we did that, how we went from a $268,000 deficit to a, basically we were plus 70,000, I think is how it ended up, how it will end up. We had more kids than what we projected, which amounted to 165,000. We had expenditures coming at 99.5% on a $26 million budget, so half a percent on $26 million becomes a fairly big number, 130,000. So the 130 and the 265 is 296 minus the 268,000 deficit, there's $35,000 of extra fund balance there. Next year, our revenues are going up one, just under 1.2 million. How are we getting those, that extra 1.2 million? The state aid increase in funding is 1.7%, which amounts to a little over 400,000. Our student count, we're projecting to go up 113 kids. I hope that'll even be higher, which amounts to 640,000. We had a decrease in the amount of grant revenue that we got of 100,000, and then other stuff, a positive increase of 50,000. So these are generalities rounding the numbers off and on there, but that's the main, how we accounted for the 1.2 million dollars of increased revenue. The expenditures are going up 1,142,000, which shows that our deficit's going from 268,000 to 245,000, a little less. Where did we spend the extra 1.1 million dollars salary and benefits increases? 750,000. A total raise of 3.5%. 2.5% plus additional one-time money that all staff were given. A total raise of 3.5%. Additional staffs, 450,000. So salaries, 750,000. Additional staff, 450,000. Savings from people that have retired, 55,000. Decrease in our grants, obviously the revenue is decreasing along with the expenditures, the same 100,000. And we had an increase in supplies and materials of 70,000, and increase in utility is of 30,000. So all of your increase, 1.1 million dollars, pretty much all of it, 99% of it's staff. I always put a bullet point in there, budget concerns and challenges. Enrollment is what triggers everything, guys. If we stop growing, I mean, it's just, it's just common knowledge, it doesn't take a lot of education, that if you stop growing, things go to Haiti in a hurry. Growth is everything in this business, enrollment growth. And we've had the benefit of growing up, growing 100, 150 kids a year. One other concern that I have, you know, state aid is always a concern. The uncertainty of state aid. I mean, it's written in statute that we're supposed to get the rate of inflation or 3%, whichever is less. But we start out the entire legislation that we don't get that, that the rules just change. I wish I could change the rules of a lot of things in the middle of the game. Life would be a lot easier if I could change the rules in the middle of the game. So it's an uncertainty that we have to live with. We just, there's nothing we can do about it, you just have to live with it. It makes planning though a little bit more difficult for you guys as a board when you have those uncertainties. The Capilale Fund, it's a fund that's benefited by the valuation increases. So I just told you that we went up $200 million in valuation. That's a fund that will greatly benefit from that. It allows us to put the field turfs, the remodel jobs, and pay cash for all those things. Another big thing, you're paying cash for 730 computers in the middle school. One-to-one program in the middle school. You can see the breakdown of our expenses, 2,178,000 of facility improvements, 10% of it's for debt service, 555,000. 1.1 million of technology purchases, and operating transfer of 675,000 to the general fund. Transportation, 320,000, 6%. Kind of a rough summary of where we're spending the Capilale dollars that we are entrusted with. It's a decrease of 435,000 from '17, '18. Because we had quite a deficit spending from '17, '18, that was, it gets confusing on the fiscal years, what we did. I think '17, '18, we're budgeted for the, maybe the middle school office addition and the course room and all that stuff, at 1.8 million. Lastly, the Special Education Fund, as we've talked about quite a bit throughout tonight. We had a 3.3% increase in expenditures, just under 200,000, and a 9.5% increase in revenues. You say, why did the revenues increase so much? Our child count went up tremendously this past year. And now we're starting to reap the benefit, or the funding on that child count going up so dramatically. Fun concerns, our fund balance is down to $200,000, and the costs continue to escalate. Hopefully, we're going in the right direction with a $340,000 budgeted surplus this year. We need to get that going in the right direction. Hopefully, at some point, up to a million dollars. That's where I'd be comfortable in the Spec Ed Fund. 1 million, which would be 20% of, roughly 20% of our expenditures, of 5 or 6 million. Questions from you guys? Not a lot of change from May, but feel free to ask me any questions or comments or...
Paul, just a question on that debt service. I know it's 10% of that Capilale. That number's not going up. I mean, that's a fixed, that's a fixed, unless we issue new bonds, that number's not going up, right?
Correct. It definitely won't go up in percentage, it'll probably go down in percentage, just due to the increase in our valuations going up. The debt is structured such that it does go up a little bit each year, but percentage-wise, it'll probably go down as a total there in the end.
Okay. Thank you.
And that'll greatly help our Bond Redemption Fund too, that increase in valuation, that our debt service will go down in that mill levy. Anybody else?
I would remind the board or redirect the board to your district strategic plan. When Business Manager Lundberg is talking about the Special Education Fund balance, one of the goals within fiscal responsibility, which is a domain of your strategic plan, is that you carry a 15% fund balance in all operating funds. So as Business Manager Lundberg noted, getting that up to around a million bucks, I believe 900,000 would be meeting your goal of approximately $15,000 in operating expenses. So that's one item we note when you guys talk about the decisions we make and how we always direct that back to the strategic plan, the domains, and the goals outlined within that. That's just an item I would remind the board of.
Thank you very much, again.
You got five minutes to ask more questions.
I'm gonna ask first question. Paul, I've got a question. Under your special education highlight, fund highlights, the 9.5 increase in revenue from the previous year, are special ed kids counted like regular kids or are they counted differently?
The special ed education kids are counted in December of every year, and they're counted by the categories that they fall in. There's six or seven levels of disability, and so they're counted in those levels of disability. And that's how we're funded on, in the following year. I think our child count went from 430 to 520, something like that. We took a tremendous, highest jump we've ever taken in the child count in my tenure this past year. This revenue will be based on December as a classic, not just come, yeah, this, not just come, correct.
Anyone else? Yep, we'll take a few minutes break here before we get started with the annual organizational meeting. All right, we will get our annual organizational meeting called to order, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Roll call, Mr. Lundberg?
Hallam.
Yes. All right, so welcome to everyone tonight to our meeting. And at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Lundberg for the touring and annul of office.
Very good. At this time, we will elect our board officers for the 2018-19 school year. So, at this time, I would entertain a nomination for board president. Is there a nomination for board president? Very good. I have a nomination for Renee Olm. Are there any other nominations for board president? Any other nominations for board president? At a third and final time, any other nominations for board president? Hearing no other nominations for board president, I would entertain the motion that nominations cease, and we cast a unanimous ballot for Renee Olm to serve as board president for the 2018-19 school year. Do I have a motion? A motion by member Saxer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by member Schrader. Roll call vote, Mr. Lundberg.
Thank you, everyone. So much appreciated. So, now vice president. Is there a nomination for vice president of Brandon Valley School? Well, I will nominate Greg Odie. Are there any other nominations for, for vice president? I'm gonna say that four times. Third and final, are there any other nominations for vice president? Hearing no other nominations for vice president, I would entertain the motion that nominations cease, and casting unanimous ballot for Mr. Greg Odie to serve as board vice president. So moved. There's been a first. There's been a first and a second. Roll call vote was for Lundberg?
Saxer. Schrader. Klumper. Odie. Another enthusiastic. Hallam.
Yes. Thank you. I think we appreciate it. This is one of those weird things we have to go through every year. So, thank you very much, everyone. Approval of the agenda. Is there anything that needs to be added, deleted, or changed? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented tonight.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Item H is to approve the certificate of recount.
So, Madam Chair, we had a very close election, and we did have calls for recount. Business Manager Lundberg could go into greater detail with that, but as I understand it, Business Manager Lundberg appointed an individual...
Stacy Long appointed an individual, and Member Klumper appointed an individual to recount and certify the board election results. So, with that, it would be my administrative recommendation that you approve the recount, and with that, have Member Klumper abstain as he had an individual that he'd directly assigned to that. So, it would be a roll call vote with Member Klumper abstaining would be my recommendation. Did I miss anything, Mr. Lundberg?
No, if I could, I'd just like to add that a big shout-out and thank you to the people that worked those elections. One doesn't realize what that all entails and the whole process, and it's a fabulous process that we all go through. We learn about in our civics classes in high school and stuff, but you never really realize it until you have to go through it. And those ladies that worked for us in that school board election at the three precincts did a very fine job. No changes in the recount. Everything was just perfect. So, I have nothing but kudos to say to the people working that election and the whole process. It was a learning experience for all of us. I've been doing this for 29 years. I talked to Dennis Olson, who's probably been doing it for 129 years, and he had never had a recount. I had never had a recount. So, it was a learning experience for all involved, and it was a fun experience for all involved. So, thank you to all those people that were involved.
Thank you for that. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the certificate of recount as presented tonight. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. Roll call, Mr. Lundberg?
Saxer.
Yeah.
Odie.
Yeah.
Klumper.
Abstain.
Schrader.
Yes.
Hallam.
Yes. All right. Item number I, we have one conflict of interest disclosure waiver request to present tonight.
Very good. Madam Chair, as outlined within state statute, any conflict of interest that a board member has and/or superintendent business manager, request for school board waiver is required. Member Klumper has completed the waiver request application. I would certainly turn it over to Mr. Klumper to outline the key details within that waiver request. But again, roll call vote with Member Klumper abstaining on this item would be my administrative recommendation. Feel free to share the details of the conflict of interest.
Sure. So, the conflict of interest is, my wife teaches fifth grade at Brandon Intermediate School. So, I guess, yeah, that's a conflict of interest. That's the specifics.
All right. If there are no questions or concerns, I would entertain a motion to approve the waiver request as presented tonight.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. Roll call vote, Mr. Lundberg?
Schrader.
Yes.
Odie.
Yeah.
Saxer.
Yeah.
Klumper. Hallam.
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, item J, adoption of regular procedures for the 2018-2019 Board of Education. This is all consent approval, and it looks like it goes all the way down to number 12, if I'm reading this correctly. All right, so I would entertain a motion to adopt the regular procedures for 2018-2019 Board of Education meetings as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Two sets of approval of minutes from the regular board meetings on June 11th and June 25th. If there are no changes, a recommendation for changes on those, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented tonight.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. That takes us to our financial items. Mr. Lundberg?
Okay, real quickly, y'all. Any questions on our bills and claims that we submitted to you guys in the board packet? We had a lot of dollar amount, not much volume, but a large, large dollar amount at the beginning of the year. We have been busy processing all those. This time of year, we processed just under 1,000 purchase requisitions and issued the subsequent POs for all of that stuff and processing of all these bills. Year-end stuff comes at June 30th, obviously, so we're doing all that. Did all that in the middle of 15 days without our office having air conditioning. Who does that? So, there you have it. Any questions? I did have a couple noted. On page one, Apple Computer, you'll see MacBooks. As you remember, we purchased 50 additional MacBooks to deal with the high school enrollment growth. Page three, East Dakota Educational Co-op, 180,000. As we had talked about, we're changing that billing cycle to 25 percent each quarter rather than having them bill 100 percent at the beginning just because of our issue with the food service or the special education fund not having a large fund balance. Also on page three, First National Bank, 450,000. That's the Capillali certificates on the intermediate school. On page four, the one-to-one laptops, 461,000 dollars, 730 of them. As I said, a lot of volume, not a lot of bills. On page nine, wage deduction account, those are all the early retirement payments that we're transferring to wage deduction account. They will be deposited into a 403B in those people's names that have early retired, 290,000. Total bills, 2.4 million dollars, $11,000 of pay vouchers, and $8,700 of food service bills.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Lundberg on the bills and claims? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the bills and claims as presented tonight. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Financial report, Mr. Lundberg?
Okay. Continuing on, real quickly, the cash report for the month of June. Had 10.7 million coming into the month. I'm reading on the third column over, the total column. Had receipts of 3.3 million and disbursements of just under 3.5 million, left 10,594,000 dollars at the end of June. Obviously, the end of our fiscal year, the highest point that it'll be at. Of that 10.6 million, 6.9 million is in the general fund, 1.9 million in the Capillali Fund, 587,000 in the special education fund, 342,000 in the pension fund, 798,000 in the bond redemption fund, and 65,000 in the enterprise fund. The 3.3 million dollars of receipts are itemized in the next two pages. The investment report for, at June 30th, we reinvested a $1 million CD at First National Bank for an interest rate of 1.7 percent, double what it was last year. We'll have a one-year maturity on that. Next statement is payroll and benefit summary. $1,700,000 was his June payroll. The breakdown of the various categories is listed for your review. The actual financial statements, the first two pages are the revenue. We're at or just a little bit above each of the revenue items, as you can see. The general fund is a little bit over. That was due to the enrollment increase that we talked about earlier in the budget presentation. The expenditures, each page is a different fund. The first-page general fund shows 98.5 after we get done including all the accounts payable, which will continue to come in for another month, so we don't know exactly for sure. We have a pretty good idea. And adding the salaries payable, we'll end up at 99.5 percent is what I would project in the, in the general fund. Capillali Fund will end up at just under 5.5 million dollars of expenditures, which will be about 94 percent of the budget of 5.8 million. Special education fund will end up at 99.4 percent, 5.7 million versus the budget of And the other two funds are right at 100 percent expended. The food service fund for year-end shows a positive balance of 92,000 dollars versus a $10,000 loss at last year. Basically, the whole profitability of that fund can be attributed to the summer lunch program. As you look at the, up on the revenue side, the federal reimbursement, the federal government is reimbursing all those meals. That's plus 65,000. So, for all practical purposes, the increase in revenue or the increase in profitability of that count can be attributed to the summer lunch program. Any questions on that? Last statement is a trust and agency statement, $111,000 of money's held for other organizations and peoples. It's all held.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lundberg. Any questions on the financial report at all tonight? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the financial report as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. No community input tonight, so that takes us on to our general business items. First, we have administration reports. Administrative Center Superintendent Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few quick updates for you this evening. Our summer reading program, I want to remind everyone that that is still in operation. Our last summer reading session will be Wednesday, July 25th. Whether students attended or did not attend, if they met their summer reading goal, we certainly encourage them to inform our librarians of that. We'll make certain and get them the award that they may receive from our program partners. Quick summer lunch program update. To date, we've had approximately 11,000 meals served this summer at Brandon Elementary. The last day for the summer lunch program will be Friday, July 27th. And I would note that the review of revenue and expenditure data is, is going to be happening here in the near future, once that program is completed. And then, we will be formulating a recommendation regarding the elimination of reduced meal fee, the reduced meal fee for the 2018-19 school year. If we have, if we have the revenue available to eliminate those meals, we certainly will be making that recommendation, but we want to make certain that the program's, has been completed and that we're able to make certain that we have those approximate $16,000 available to eliminate that reduced meal fee for those that are eligible. A couple of construction updates. Our outdoor stadium, concrete curb and drainage are in progress. We expect to see synthetic turf installation beginning the middle of this week. So, Wednesday, as long as we don't have any weather issues, we anticipate the carpet to begin being laid early August is our substantial completion target date. Here at the high school, Business Manager Lundberg noted that the old office space is being reconfigured and renovated into three classrooms, increasing our capacity at the high school for the number of students that we can facilitate learning for. I would tell you that the flooring installation is in progress and continues. Finish work continues, and we also have an early August substantial completion date target. There is a professional development opportunity for our board members in the event that you're available. The Associated School Board and School Administrators of South Dakota hold a joint convention that's in Sioux Falls, August 9th and 10th. If you are interested in attending, please contact Jennifer Swenson at the main office, and she will get you going in the right direction as far as registration. Would also note that we have talked about our facility review committee. In that process, we will begin that process this fall. Members of that committee are myself, Business Manager Lundberg, Operations Manager Henchel, some other administrators within the district and teachers within the district. And then, I would also ask each of our board members to select two individuals to participate in that facility review committee process. So, when you leave here today, be thinking about two individuals that you'd like to give me as far as names go for participation through our facility review process. In addition to that, our Buildings and Grounds Committee, Board Committee participates in that process. Ultimately, that facility review committee develops non-binding recommendations, and then, this review committee is also going to be tasked with the challenge of developing a 20-year growth vision. So, not only what do we look like five years from now, but what do we look like 20 years from now as we begin to make facility decisions? So, homework, two people at your earliest convenience.
I have a quick question about that.
Yeah.
What type of people are you looking for as far as who we recommend?
Sure. First and foremost, patrons of the Brandon Valley School District. So, make sure they're residents of the Brandon Valley School District. Past that, any individual that you feel would bring insights and valuable contributions to a large group that are looking to the facility needs of the school district. Could come from a variety of backgrounds. So, I would tell you that I would, I would leave that solely to your discretion, and again, two individuals have to be residents of the Brandon Valley School District. That's the sole, that would be my sole requirement. Good question. I would also like to take an opportunity for some special employee recognition. Director Gaye Anderson, the director of our Child Nutrition Services Program, has had an incredible experience, leadership journey at the national level. She was installed as the School Nutrition Association National President this last week. We attended the National School Nutrition Association Conference. I can tell you that it was an incredible experience. Through, through her service at the national level, we have the opportunity to provide all of our kitchen managers with a world-class professional development experience there at the national conference at no cost to the district, but rather at cost to the national, the national group, the SNA group. Four, 5,000 people at a general session, at the last general session, it was truly an incredible experience. In addition to that, myself, President Olm, Operations Manager Henchel, and Director Anderson presented a session at, at the national, at the national conference. It was well-attended. Renee did such a great job, they actually made us come back the next day and record it so that they could utilize it as a professional development experience and training tool for school nutrition professionals all across the country. And the really challenging thing with that was, I don't know if anyone's ever presented to a barroom with more people in it, but we did, and the only advice they gave you was pretend like you're presenting to a moonful of people. So, that was a professional stretch, but a great experience. So, ladies and gentlemen, I can't tell you how proud I am and we should all be of Director Anderson and her pursuit in this leadership capacity at the national level. A good, a good example that I would utilize is the United States Department of Agriculture Secretary, Sonny Perdue, is a gentleman that she meets with.
His assistant was at the national conference the night before. They had, they had supper and talked through issues facing school nutrition all across the country. So, it was incredibly impactful for us to have an individual or a player at that level. I would tell you that her involvement at the national level has brought innovations to the Brandon Valley School District, has increased the efficiency of the program that we run with child, child nutrition, and certainly would ask if they wanted to add any comments to that. So, it was an incredible experience.
Part of, when Gaye was talking about coming or going to SNA conferences every year, she didn't think that our school district, because of our low free reuse, she didn't think we qualified for someone's role until she realized somebody said, "No, I think we can do that." So, this is where she got the ideas from. I'm not a, we kind of, they jokingly called themselves lunch ladies in a very nice, you know, it's, it's, it was awesome. I'm not a secret person, and I walked away with a lot of different things. I mean, it was better than some professional development that I go through for my own profession. So, let's just say that. I think we have some interesting ideas that are gonna come, and I think we're kind of excited about some of those, and we're waiting till those are ready to unveil before we talk about those. But just very proud of Gaye and the accomplishments that she's given. And I think all the participants that went from Brandon as far as nutrition services, I think they all enjoyed themselves and learned a lot. And we all kind of tried to break out and go to different sessions, so nobody would overlap, we'd come up with different ideas. But you're right, speaking to, and it wasn't me, it was him. I think Ty would agree, it was he and Gaye with the presentation why we got asked to come back to an improved room like this. We did hear, we were missing. But it was, it was very good. We had a good attendance at our, better than I thought it was at our presentation. It was actually fun to do. I would not have known it was going to be so. It went very well, and hoping, just hoping we can continue to send people from our nutrition services department to these every year because it's a good hope. Thank you. Thank you.
New staff in-service for all of our new teachers. The 20th and 21st, we will hold staff in-service and workshop for our, our teachers. The 21st, we will hold an all-staff welcome back at 10:30 a.m. Again, that's all staff classified, certified. Would certainly invite our school board to be present at that. We will lean on our administration to serve the meal. So that's always, it's always a fun thing to do. And then, I would note August 22nd, first day of school for students. A couple of specific items that I want to note for our public. Bus passes, they are available for purchase. If your child is going to be riding the bus, please do that prior to the deadline of August 8th. Again, they are currently available for purchase. They can be made, purchases can be made at the transportation center. They can also be made online at the web mall. Please meet that deadline. If you don't meet that deadline, there's a two-week delay in your ability to ride the school bus or district transportation. It takes an awful lot of planning, work, and preparation to transport 2,000 kids daily, so that's why we have to have that deadline. So again, please make your bus pass purchase prior to the deadline. And then, just a couple of notes, 18-19 calendars, they're posted on the district website. Our academic calendar and then also our activities calendar can be found on our central office website. I believe that is all I have, and I would certainly entertain any questions the board may have. Enclosed, you will find a detailed overview of the district's bullying and harassment report, broke down to building level behind this initial front page. I would note, in comparison to previous years, formal written complaints have decreased, and the number of informal investigations without formal written complaints has increased. And what I believe that would be attributed to is our, our efforts to create an environment that is conducive to sharing concerns with teachers and with principals. So individuals are, are finding that it's not necessary to file a formal written complaint to have action and an investigation occur, rather, although doing is sharing with the teacher, sharing with the principal, and those informal investigations are occurring and yielding positive results. A few key data points that I would draw your attention to include, we had 107 total bullying complaints with results founded. Now, 107 is 107 too many. Okay? We can all agree that 107 complaints that have findings is 107 too many. However, we have 4,000 kids who walk through our doors every single day plus, so we've got great kids doing the right things for the right reasons a strong majority of the time. But what I want to draw to your attention is that we had 102 of 107, or 95% of founded cases had administrative actions that were effective. Okay? So the 107 complaints that were founded, we found that bullying had occurred or harassment had occurred, our administration took action, whether it be counseling, whether it be detention, whether it be suspension, whether it be remediation, whatever it is, and then they do follow-up and reoccurrence data work, and ultimately, 95% of those actions were effective. So my takeaway in response to any and all would be, teletrusted adult. If you are having issues, report your bullying, report bullying behaviors to teachers and/or administrators. They will be investigated, and appropriate actions will be taken, and ultimately, in generally, 95% of the time, effective appropriate actions are taken. So that would be all I would note regarding the 17-18 bullying harassment report. Would certainly entertain any questions you have.
Any questions for Superintendent Larson? All right, hearing none, we will go on. Mr. Lombard, anything else tonight? All right. Yep, you're welcome. High School, Dr. Talcott? Mr. Schluckaway? Mr. Thorson? Mr. Frickin? Mr. Skipstead? Mr. Bab? A lot of nothing. Ms. Foster?
Hello.
And Mrs. Hawke, Mr. Horace, Mrs. Palmer. Director of Instruction, Ms. Nelson? Okay. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the policy that we will be discussing and have holding our first reading on tonight is our service animal policy. I would tell you that the reason that it is being discussed and receiving as first reading tonight is due to the timeliness in which it's needed. We have an individual family that has informed us that they will be utilizing a service animal. I would tell you that in accordance to federal law, we're required to allow such use, so the development of a policy to outline the definition and requirements that they have to meet are necessary. So with that, I would tell you that included in the policy, you will find the definition of a service animal, which is in accordance to ADA. We talk about the admission of service animals to public events. We talk about the procedures for admission of a service animal into the school building. We talk about the responsibility and care of a service animal, including the responsibility that is. We also speak to liability. And then, another item is exclusion of the service animal. So in the event that a service animal is brought in and we take action to exclude that service animal, this outlines the reasons that we would do so, and then ultimately, the appeal process. So with that...
I would tell you that I can read the policy. The Brandon Valley School District has established the following procedures for the evaluation of any request to bring a service animal into the school district, whether the request is coming from a member of the public, a staff member, or from a student. The definition of a service animal. The Americans with Disabilities Act of 2010 defines a service animal as follows. Any dog that is individually trained to do work or perform tasks for the benefit of an individual with a disability, including a physical, sensory, psychiatric, intellectual, or other mental disability. Other species of animals, whether wild or domestic, trained or untrained, are not service animals for the purposes of this definition. Examples of work or task include, but are not limited to, assisting individuals who are blind or have a low vision with navigation and other tasks. Alerting individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing to the presence of people or sounds. Providing non-violent protections or rescue work. Boiling a wheelchair. Assisting an individual during a seizure. Alerting individuals of, individuals of diabetic highs and lows. Alerting individuals to the presence of allergens. Retrieving items such as medicine or the telephone. Providing physical support and assistance with balance and stability to individuals with motor disabilities. And helping persons with psychiatric and neurological disabilities by preventing or interrupting impulsive or destructive behaviors. The crime deterrent effects of an animal's presence and the provision of emotional support, well-being, comfort, and companionship do not constitute work or task for the purpose of this definition. Therapy animals are not allowed. Admission of service animals to public events. Individuals with disabilities may be accompanied by their service animal while on district property for events that are open to the general public. School district staff may inquire of the owner or handler of the animal whether the animal is required because of a disability and the specific tasks that the animal has been trained to perform. Staff may not ask questions about an individual's disability. The district shall not require an owner or handler of a service animal to pay an extra charge for the animal to attend events for which a fee is charged. Procedures for admission of a service animal into a school building. Prior to the admission of any service animal to be present in the school building on a regular basis, the parent of the student or the individual employee requesting the presence of a service animal must provide written notification of the intent to bring a service animal into the school. The notification must include the following information, which will be presented to the building principal for approval. Number one, whether the, whether the animal is required because of a disability. Number two, documentation of the animal's licensure as a service animal, including a description of the specific disability-related work or task the animal is trained to perform for the individual in school, and documentation of appropriate and current vaccinations, a statement of good health, and the absence of any parasites from a licensed veterinarian, as well as any required municipal licensure. This documentation will be required prior to admission and at the start of each subsequent school year. No service animal may be brought into any district building by a staff member or student without prior approval. And then, Appendix A is ultimately our registration form for, for the, for the service animal. The responsibility and care of the service animal. The Brandon Valley School District is not responsible for the care and supervision of a service animal, including walking the animal or responding to the animal's need to relieve itself. The owner or handler of a service animal shall be solely responsible for: Number one, servicing care of the animal, including any feeding, exercising, cleanup, and stain removal. In the case of a young child or a student with disabilities who is unable to care, care for, or supervise the service animal, the parent is responsible for providing care and supervision of the animal. Number two, control of the animal at all times through the use of a harness, leash, tether, or by other effective means. And number three, required training for the use of and inclusion of the service animal in the school environment will be the responsibility of the parent or their animal's service organization. This includes any training required for the students or staff at that school. All trainings must be approved and coordinated with the building principal. Insert comment. So prior to the start of the school year, it will be the responsibility of the owner to work with the building principal to conduct a training so that all of the students know that, within that building, that this is a service animal, you don't pet it, you don't feed it, you don't approach it, et cetera, et cetera. Not our responsibility to provide that training, the responsibility of the owner, however, they must coordinate with building principal. Moving on to liability. The staff member owning the service animal or the student slash parent-owner is liable for any damage to school district or personal property and any injuries to individuals caused by their service animal. The school district is not responsible for any costs related to the service animal. The staff member or student parent who uses a service animal on school district property will hold the school district harmless and identify the school district from any such damages. Appendix A. Exclusion of the service animal. So this gets down to when we would say no. We can't say no initially, this comes back to when we would say, could say no. A service animal may be denied access to school property if any of the following occur. Number one, animal is not house-broking. Number two, the animal is not under the control of its handler. The service animal must have a harness, leash, or other tether unless the handler is unable because of a disability to use a harness or leash or other tether, or the use of a harness, leash, or other tether would interfere with the animal's, with the service animal's safe effective use of work tasks. In this case, the handler must use voice-controlled signal or other effective means to control the service animal. Number three, the animal poses a direct threat to the health or safety of others that cannot be eliminated by reasonable accommodations or modifications. Insert allergy conversation. In the event that a student, please note, insert comment. In the event that a student has an allergy in that same room, what we would do is we would remove the child with the allergy to a different classroom. You cannot discriminate against the individual with a disability and make them move, you're required to have the individual with the, the pet dander allergy move to a different location.
What about the teacher, staff?
We will get a different teacher. Item number four. The inclusion of the animal represents a fundamental alteration of the learning environment. If a service animal has excluded the individual with a disability, will still be given an equal opportunity to participate in district service programs or activities with appropriate accommodations, modifications, and supports, but without the presence of their service animal on present, on the premises, parents of non-service animal students may request a change of placement for their child if they do not wish to have their child in the same classroom with a service animal. So again, I don't want my child in a room with the service animal, my child moves, not the service animal child. And then, ultimately, there is a appeal process, any individual with a service animal who is aggrieved by a decision to exclude, limit, or remove a service animal may appeal that decision to the superintendent. The appeal must be in writing and provide specific and detailed information regarding the basis of which, the basis of the appeal. So that will conclude the first reading of our policy, EJ Service Animal Policy. Certainly entertain thoughts, questions, or issues. If I can't answer a question, I will seek counsel and do so at our next meeting, so feel free.
So I think being able to accommodate for any and all students is by first and foremost our first mission. What my concern is, whether it's student in classroom, I think that is something that's easier to accommodate because we can find other classrooms. My concern would be for those who have more on the severe allergy or even fear of animal. But there's also staff that I believe that we have to consider, whether it's a teacher, administration within a cafeteria area, that we're not able to just move easily. Sometimes, it's just with even having within the areas that they're going to pass through. So I just want to make sure that we're aware of those and what we're going to do in those instances. Is it, are we able to move buildings? I mean, there's going to be some of those things that I think we're going to have to be aware of, which I'm sure we already are, but for those...
We just note that administratively, we will work regarding scheduling, regarding early dismissal from the classroom to allow the service animal to navigate its way to the next classroom. We'll work with any individual that has an allergy, a fear of animals, et cetera. Quite honestly, these are unprecedented waters for us. We will navigate, navigate them with thoughtfulness, with all students in mind, and very, very bested them to meet all children. So undoubtedly, there are some questions and some challenges that may arise. I will tell you that surrounding districts do have service animals within them. The policy is created and drawn from surrounding districts as well as done by legal counsel, so it is, it's the very best starting point to move.
Any further questions for Superintendent Larson? We have time between now and the next meeting, so if something comes up that you're not going to know, that's usually happy to speed you up. You know, that's early, you may have a question that you have asked, but it may not, but I'll have to be now or tomorrow. But just remember, you have public meetings.
I have a question on the exclusion of service animal section. So like number one, for example, is it like one strike, you're going to act, like, that's one. Yes? Yeah? Okay. Great question.
I would tell you that there will be a level of administrative discretion that is necessary for the exclusion of the service animal. For example, you know, if the animal indicates that it's outside, they're walking into the door, and it tickles little on the floor, that's probably very different than owner having it, you know, just blatantly do it twelve times in one day or whatever. I tell you, there will be a level of administrative discretion that will be necessary to apply when talking about the exclusion, and I would note that that's why there is a field process in the event that they feel as though the discretion or the decision is not appropriate, it can be appealed, but that's no different from each other, I would create some follow up. So I would tell you that I would want, we're just sitting in a corner where it's one thing and/or so scripted that we don't have a level of administrative discretion. Question? Does it affect our student's transportation? Okay. Very well. Okay. So, folks on the bus, if they have a service animal. So, great question. I would tell you that transportation is an extension of the school day. We're talking about federal law, we're talking about ADA compliance. Special education students are required to be transported in many cases in accordance with their ID. So transportation is undoubtedly gonna be a component of the situations that we work through. Naturally, whether it's a bus, or a suburban, or a minivan, we will be dealing with the same potential issues with children that have an allergy, et cetera. The good news from all of the conversations I've had with fellow superintendents who have this already going on in their district is that allergies on this topic tend to be very mild or less severe. For example, itchy eyes, runny nose, et cetera, not to the extreme to which, which would involve the antifungal shot. Quite typically, it's a very, it's much more a mild reaction. So that's a benefit, that's a positive. But to your point, undoubtedly, transportation will be another component of administratively what we are required to navigate. So at this time, I do have an indication of building level. I'm unaware if transportation is required for the child or not. I would ask that we don't jump into which building that is, and we allow the policy process to proceed forward from there. But, yes, have a building level idea. We know, we know the grade level of the child. Regarding transportation, that's something I would work with Pepper or with Director Bab on and work with him. Yeah. Thank you. No, nothing changed. Nothing changes regarding student expectation on conduct. The expectations will be clearly outlined to students regarding what their conduct is leading towards a service animal, whether it's on the school bus, in the classroom, or the hallway. Our school bus is our extension of the classroom. There will be no change to any other policy regarding student conduct and or expectation. No, no change.
All right. Thank you, that's my question. Through our first reading, and like I said, we're getting quite a bit of time left. So we do have adoption second readings for...
Policies listed A through H. Um, go ahead.
I can comment. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, you would note, these are cleanups, making language consistent through some transportation policies, aligning our Board of Education agenda format to what our Board of Education agenda format actually is. The admission of a couple of safety protocols that weren't consistent, rather than you put those protocols in policy, we'll just utilize those with our safety manual. Again, straightforward stuff that aligns practice, current practice with policy. So would certainly entertain any questions you have regarding the second reading items.
If there are no questions on the adoption or the second readings of items A through H, I would entertain a motion to approve those policies as they are presented tonight. So moved. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That takes us to general business, items one through nine. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please. We have to approve general business items one through nine. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Eleven items under consent for personnel. I would entertain a motion to approve items one through eleven under personnel.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. There's one information only for medical leave. Under communication, there are some building permits there for your review, and a thank you note from Mrs. Beasley for the recognition banquet and retirement gift. Board reports, are there any formal board reports tonight that need to take place? I know we're having our annual meeting on Wednesday at Teach Well or EDEC, so we will be doing the same process for that on Wednesday. Otherwise, you can see with change of board membership, we have change of some committees, so just there for your information. Otherwise, that looks like it takes us to the end of our regularly scheduled agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
There's...
Second, all of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Congratulations. The next one.